A little less than. Good morning, we're going to call the meeting to order. It's 9:30, we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me for a prayer. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen. And we have minutes.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the September 30th meeting.
Second motion.
Motion second, is there any discussion? Roll call please.
Swedick, yes.
Hambley, yes.
Harrison.
Yes. And next up, is there any public comment regarding pending resolutions today? Anything on pending resolutions? Seeing none, we'll move on to resolutions. To start us off, will be the Highway Engineers Office, represented by Dan Becker.
Morning.
Morning, Dan.
I've got five resolutions for your consideration today. The first is authorizing a Medina County engineer to advertise for bids for various aggregate for the 2026 construction season. The next is authorizing Medina County engineer to advertise for bids for the hot mix Potuminis plant mixes. The third is entering into agreement with township and villages in Medina County to sell their materials. The fourth is approving the final plat for the Cobblestone Park subdivision Phase 1A replat. That was a mouthful. And the last is approving the final plat for the Cobblestone Park subdivision Phase 1A replat number three.
I will make a-
Before you move-
I already told her.
Oh, did you?
I will make a motion to approve resolutions one through three.
Great. I will second the motion.
Motion second on motions one through three, is there any discussion? Roll call please.
Swedick, yes.
Hambley, yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
I will make a motion to approve resolutions four and five.
Second the motion.
Motion and second on four and five, I am going to abstain on this, but is there any additional discussion? Roll call please.
Swedick, yes.
Hambley, yes.
Harrison.
Abstain.
Thank you, have a good week.
Thanks, Dan. Next up is Jeremy Cinco, the sanitary engineer. Morning, Jeremy.
Morning, everyone. Four resolutions for consideration today. The first is a resolution authorizing an agreement between the Director of the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency and the Medina County for sanitary sewer self-certification. We are certified, or self-certified for water, so this will allow us to also be self-certified for sewer for faster processing of the PTIs. The second is authorizing the transfer of funds between various sanitary engineer and county funds. The third is authorizing change order number one for the Ryan Road Water Storage Tank and Westfield Stand Plate Rehab Project. And the final resolution is authorizing change order number three for the Marx Road Water Main Replacement Project.
Second the mo-
Oh, sorry. I want a motion to approve the four resolutions.
Second the motion.
Motion second. Second, motion second. Is there any discussion?
It's usually me, Steve.
I know, I know, I just like-
Roll call please.
Swedick, yes.
Hambley, yes.
Harrison.
Yes. Thanks, Jeremy. Next up is Holly Mira. Morning, Holly.
Good morning. On our personnel changes resolution today, we have two new hires, one in maintenance and one in dog shelter. One promotion in building, one lateral class changed in building. Three rate increases, one at senior and adult services, one in maintenance, and one in transit. Two leave of absence, one at county home and one in sanitary. One return from leave at county home, and one resignation in sanitary. Second resolution is approving and amending the table of organization for the Medina County Senior and Adult Services.
I will make a motion to approve the two resolutions.
Second the motion.
Motion second, discussion? Roll call please.
Swedick, yes.
Hambley, yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Holly. Next up is finance, Brett Thomas.
Good morning, commissioners. All right, I have 14, so we're going to chomp through this as quick as we can, but since I have them for so long anyway, why was the broom late to his appointment? Because he overswept.
There you go.
All right, so anyhow, our first resolution is expenditure adjustments for various funds. The noteworthy one on here is actually, the large one on here is for McSass, it's actually the voucher program for them for the Wadsworth Cafe, moving over to their grant payments. The second one is revenue adjustments for various funds. We don't have anything terribly unusual here. We do have MIPA funds for McSass going into a different grant year fund. Our third resolution is cash transfers for various funds. This is by and large my quarterly cash movements out to the different funds that we need to support for specific county objectives, including things like our capital improvements funds, our software funds, and our mediation. Our fourth resolution is authorizing transfer for print shop revenue in the amount of $1,294.78. Our fifth resolution is the gasoline rotary fund in the amount of $22,350.14. Our sixth resolution is our sales tax for the county. We are transferring a total of $5,037,453.35 over to the various school boards. Our seventh resolution is the creation of the Sheriff's Office Flock Camera Grant Fund and authorizing appropriation. This grant was actually approved back in June. We're just kind of catching up on our paperwork here. This was approved for a total of $57,000 paid for by OCJS for the acquisition of flock cameras. Our eighth resolution is the acceptance of an addendum to the fiscal year 2627 grant for community corrections grant for adult probation. This is actually increasing our grant by $72,151. Our ninth resolution is similar. It is an increase for the CCA grant for Medina Municipal Court in the amount of $31,465. Our 10th resolution is designating the Hope and Healing Survivor Resource Center, DBA the Battered Women's Shelter, to receive the proceeds from the marriage license and divorce fees for the calendar year of 2026. Each year, we have to put that out in resolution for you guys so that we can transfer that funding over to them. Our 11th resolution is transfer of inventory between offices. This time, it is the sheriff donating some folding tables over to the park district. Our 12th resolution is our excess property resolution. Our 13th resolution is expenses of county officials. We have nothing out of state here this time. And our 14th resolution is our weekly bills in the amount of $1,141,145.95.
I'll make a motion to approve the 14 resolutions.
Did we have two 10s in there?
Possibly.
Two resolutions?
I don't think so. If so, that is a numbering error on mine.
Well, I jumped from the community corrections grant agreement to the battered women's shelter.
I think the ninth is missing.
Medina Municipal one was not in there.
Oh, if so, that's a printing error on you for you guys. I have it.
There were 14 you presented.
Yes, correct.
I just wanted to make, there was no number at the top, so I wanted to make sure we were on the right track.
Mine are all numbered.
So, we do have a motion to approve the 14 resolutions.
Second the motion.
Motion and second, is there any further discussion? Roll call please.
Swedick, yes.
Hambley, yes.
Harrison.
Yes. Thanks, Brett.
You're welcome.
Next up, Matt Spire, county administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have three resolutions. The first one is authorizing change order number three. This is associated with the Hubbard Valley Radio Tower Project, in addition to earthwork that was needed in the amount of $3,800. Second resolution is establishing public hearings for our building department. Those public hearings are associated with proposed fee schedule increases. Those will be held on Tuesday, November 4th at 8:30 in this room, as well as Tuesday, November 18th at 8:30 also in this room. And the third and final is authorizing employee health plan funding rate contributions for the 2026 healthcare plan.
I will make a motion to approve.
I will second the motion.
Motion second, is there any discussion?
I will point out that when we have public hearings regarding permit fees and increases, even though you may not, if you're not able to attend, you could still communicate with the Board of Commissioners or come to the Board of Commissioners meetings, and would be certainly be glad to give you whatever information that would be shared at those public hearings beforehand and afterwards, just to kind of make sure that you've got the information necessary to evaluate and have input on those proposed increases. So you don't have to be present in order to have, to have our ear regarding those fee increases.
Not to speak now or forever hold your peace.
Correct, correct. It's just an additional opportunity.
Right, those are additional opportunities, great way to say it.
Okay.
I will make a motion to approve the three resolutions.
We already did that.
Oh. Sorry, Steve.
Any additional discussion?
No.
Roll call.
Swedick, yes.
Hambley, yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Next up, we will move on to department updates with Denise Testa kicking us off. Good morning, Denise.
Good morning. Can I just have one resolution? I'm an underachiever. It is appointing an alternate to the Medina County-
One resolution, no jokes, but that's okay.
No jokes.
Consider it anywhere.
My jokes are not nearly as good as Brett's. So, appointing an alternate to the Medina County Planning Commission and Rick Dumford, who I'm very excited to work with, we went through Leadership Medina back in 2009, so.
I will make a motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call please.
Swedick, yes.
Hambley, yes.
Harrison.
Yes. Onto the update.
For our update, so the development agreement, proposed development agreement and subdivision regulations RFQ, we received three proposals. We met yesterday, and we have decided to interview two of the firms, so more to come on that. I'm continuing with my planning services and fair housing outreach to our townships and villages, so this month I visited Seville last night, had a very warm welcome. I'm going to Hinkley tonight, Liverpool, York, and Litchfield to round out. Those conversations have been going very well. We've talked about some of the services that we can provide them with mapping and GIS, which leads us into our next topic of we're going to send out a survey to determine what services they're interested in and what information they would like to see from us. So, more to come on that. For our November meeting, for Planning Commission, we have 10 agenda items, so bring your popcorn. No, we're going to have some refreshments there. For our PY24 Community Development Block Grant, again, thank you for your feedback last week regarding the additional funds. I have moved that forward with the state to complete a budget amendment to allocate that to the Wadsworth Senior Citizens Rental and Food Assistance Program. And then we'll move forward with the battered women's shelter van as well. And the Wadsworth Sidewalk Project, we will meet this week to, in our pre-construction meeting, and complete the contract signing for that. Our next zoning inspector meeting is on October 21st, so I'm looking forward to seeing our zoning inspectors again. Are there any questions?
You led off with the discussion on the developer agreement.
Yes.
Consultant, I think the ball will get rolling with the committee meetings before the end of the year.
I hope so.
The kind of timeline we're on.
I'm cautiously optimistic.
Good, me too. Anything else?
All right, thank you so much.
Thanks, Denise. Next up, Laura Toth from Senior and Adult Services. The new name is becoming more natural.
That's right, awesome.
And the new logo is still great.
Not for me, it's going to be a while.
It's a great logo, though.
So, we're only 10 months in, it's fine. Oktoberfest, our Oktoberfest took place last Friday at the Medina Eagles. This is our annual fall celebration, complete with polka music, dancing, broad sauerkraut, root beer. It was a, it was a great success. We entertained more than 175 people, and we had a nice press coverage, so it was, it was really good. It was our last offsite event for 2025. Our large gatherings for the rest of the year will take place onsite, starting with our Halloween party on October 24th. Why a week early? Because the Brunswick Halloween Party is on October 31st, and we tend to have our big celebrations on Fridays, so that's coming up. Our farmer's market report for the month, we have a total of 409 seniors who signed up for our farmer's market vouchers. And Medina County has been awarded 20,000, seniors in Medina County have been awarded $20,450 in funds, as each person gets a $50 voucher. Thus far, $11,370.31 have been redeemed, or about 56%, so we really want to get that up. Back when we had paper vouchers, we were always in the 80s and striving for that 90%. So, I would really like to see more people utilize. So we're doing that, trying to get the word out through social media, and we're going to look at doing an email blast to people and saying, you know, get out there, use those vouchers. The Senior Adult Foundation just approved $20,500 to send all farmer's market voucher recipients all the food-only gift cards for the holiday season. So, that'll be nice as well. Any questions on that? I know, I just want more utilization. Our bathroom construction project continues to move along nicely. We now have four distinct bathrooms when you go into the construction area, and a cleaning closet. It makes a big difference when all the studs and drywall are up, and you could see from the picture like, oh yes, this is what I want it to look like. So, that is, the project is on schedule with turnover scheduled for November 14th, but they will probably be done before that. As we wind down the, as we wound down the Digital Inclusion and Literacy Program last year, our dial, we had some unspent funds, and those were turned over to Senior Adult Services to use on digital education for this year, to be used by December 31st. So we have done that, the whole year. We have had computer education, both group classes and one-on-one computer literacy thing, but we did have some money left over, so we decided to purchase smartboards for both our agency, and we were able to purchase one for the county home to utilize in their activities with residents. We've already done some innovative things such as using computers and tablets and the smartboard to create digital art, which was really new for seniors. It's a great, it's a nice way to introduce people to using technology and what technology can do. So, we're looking forward to using that more, both at the county home and at Senior Adult Services, and educating more seniors. Hopefully, it'll spark their interest. Coming up in the next month, October's a really busy month, we have our strategic planning session for 2026 through 2028. We've invited staff, foundation board members, advisory board members, and senior participants to participate. And thanks to Veteran Services, we're going to use their broom to hold that strategic planning in, and that's on October 20th. And we also have a services survey circulating. Ooh, that's like a services survey.
Survey, yeah.
I got that up, all right. So we'll collect the data from that as well. We also this month have a staff retreat on October 15th for team building utilizing equine therapy horses. And thanks to the Senior Adult Foundation for paying for that group activity for our staff, and also to the board for letting us close just a little bit early on October 15th. Giddy up. Anything else? That's all I got.
Nope.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Laura. Keep up the great work. Next up is commissioners' resolutions, and the first one we have is appointing, reappointing a member to the Medina County Advisory Council on Aging and Disability and the Western Reserve Area Agency on Aging, five county advisory council. This is appointing, reappointing David Wetzel as at-large member number three.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Motion second, any discussion?
Just want to mention that, thank Mr. Wetzel for his service.
Yes.
Roll call please.
Swedick, yes.
Hambley, yes.
Harrison.
Yes. Next up is public comment. Is there anyone here to participate in public comment? You're here, yes. And if you would, I know you've been here before, just come up and give us your name and address, and then share your comment. And-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And then you'll have five minutes from the time that you're, you announce your name.
I'm Melissa Clifford from Litchfield, Ohio, at 4310 Bryanton Road, and I'm a resident out there who's part of a growing network to be kind of watching over and keeping tabs on our Buckeye local school district. So I'd come last month, and I spoke about my position on the unvoted property taxes, and how Buckeye is about to build a whole new Buckeye High School, using a lot of the funds that voters originally allowed to be used for current expenses. So as, I think what I'll do is, oh, I gave you all of those copies, can I have one of those copies back?
Sure.
Because this actually, it is good. So I represent a bunch of people who don't necessarily like to get up here and do the public speaking and come to government meetings, but I do represent a whole bunch of people who like their ability to go vote on property tax levies and school bond levies. So we show up, we have a high percentage of voter turnout, but the schools have actually just kind of undermined us in a way because they have this unvoted property tax. And so now they can go ahead, and I see it's against statutes that they can actually move these $32 million of funds that are mostly going to be from the buildup of the last five years of unvoted property taxes to pay for a big part of these schools. So, we, so let me say this, because this is well-written. While voters were distracted with the concerted effort to impose a 35-year bond levy to expand Buckeye schools, we were also paying record property tax bills. As a result, since 2021, Buckeye quietly collected increasing record property tax. Buckeye had the ability to reduce tax rates to scale back tax hikes, but chose not to each year. In May 2025, after the bond levy failed for the third time, the school board approved to transfer the general operating fund surplus of $32 million into a new capital projects fund. The board is quickly pursuing a slightly scaled-down version of what the voters rejected and plans to spend almost $65 million. They are in hot pursuit to hire an architect and a construction manager by the end of this year before we get in two new school board members. So I can give you that back. So I just wanted to reaffirm that I love that you guys deliberated what you deliberated about your excess surplus of 3.5 million. Buckeye is getting improportionately more than what you guys are trying to figure out what to do with, and they are not even acknowledging it to the public that they have these excess dollars. So we're pressing them. The treasurer is blowing me off, the treasurer who's been with us for one year, we've had a superintendent that's been here for two years. We have our concerns, but what we're going to do is go through the budget commission process. So I am on the agenda to speak at the budget commission, budget commission meeting next Friday. And your auditor's office has been very cooperative. I spoke with one of you as commissioner, I've spoke with the treasurer, like I said, the auditor. So I read and study this statute on tax levy. I get that we have ways to take care of ourselves from the local district, and I just keep wanting to communicate with you and the rest of our county offices so that we can take care of what we need to take care of when certain entities are missing the mark. And I'm here to tell you that Buckeye is missing the mark, and I will be pressing that they not receive the excess surplus for next year, maybe before the tax bills go out in January. And then we need to address what happened already, and we are actually pursuing finding a lawyer who is very good at tax levy law. That's, that'll be it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Clifford. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to our discussion session. Brett, you're here for the tax discussion, I assume? Same for everybody else, okay? Great. Well, I know we're going to continue our discussion on the property tax matters, and we do have some additional information, including financial information. Specifically, the new information, I guess, from our prior discussion dives a little bit deeper into the, to the homestead exemption numbers. I found that information to be very interesting in as much as it kind of compares the, the homestead reimbursement numbers to the inside millage increase for each taxing entity. For most of the ones on the list, at least those who do have the benefit of inside millage adjustments, the, the lost revenue from the piggyback homestead would be fully replaced, for the most part, by the, by the inside millage adjustment. So, that was an interesting eye-opener for me. There are still some numbers on that sheet for the, I still like the homestead approach from a targeted relief standpoint, because I think goes to the property taxpayers who, who need the most benefit. But the, but the other things that opened my eyes on that are those entities that don't receive inside millage, specifically on this sheet, the DD board and the Career Center. There are others, most of the tax and fire districts would be in the same boat, but the dollars are different. But specifically, the DD board would, would have, you know, $264,000 of revenue that's not replaced by inside millage. And the Medina County Career Center, that, that one is really alarming, $182,000 of revenue that would not be replaced by inside millage. Some of the other big dollar adjustments, though, when you compare them against the inside millage, it's going to be in hand. I think they look a lot more favorable than, than, you know, that make this a little bit more viable path than what I thought.
I really was leaning towards the homestead exemption. When you look at these numbers, it is a good, excellent targeted option. I, I cannot support the Career Center losing $182,000. Their budget, not that, you know, DD, it's a significant number too, but when you look at DD's budget and the Career Center's budget, $182,000 to the Career Center, I just can't support.
Paul, it's, it's a $5.4 million tax relief, as I understand, and I wanted to thank Brett for putting everything together, kind of puts in context. Doubling the credit means over 11,000 low-income seniors will receive approximately $1,000 each in tax relief, and more than 400 disabled veterans would receive approximately $2,000 each. Those are significant-
Yes, they are.
Dollars. And unfortunately, this is, as I mentioned before, what we were looking for is a scalpel, and what the legislature gave us was a sledgehammer. But it's about as close as you can dice it. I mean, I'm not sure, yeah, it's, it's one of those things where, yeah, it's unfortunate you have one entity that that would have that kind of a, an impact, but when you look at the tax relief that's needed out there, and we're getting emails all the time, as what other are other options? And that's, we end up going right back, if there's only one option that just impacts us, that's cutting our inside millage.
Yep.
And we know that the benefit then gets spread out over 84,000 parcels. So it's, it's, it's a low impact, but, and I want to thank Rhonda for looking at what other counties are doing, and it seems to me that what we're seeing is actually much more talking about, they're recognizing the impact of these other entities and just reducing their inside millage.
Yes.
And, but they're also then, as you've read by the newspaper, they're also then encouraging this kind of dialogue with every local government that's getting inside millage should be having these same conversations. Every township-
Yes.
-board of trustees ought to be talking, the village councils ought to be talking, the city councils ought to be talking, the school boards ought to be talking, and we know, we know that Cloverleaf already has.
Yep.
And they're making the adjustments. Every one of them should be having these conversations-
Yes.
-of looking, that is getting an increase as to what they could afford for tax relief. And, so I'm, I understand that, so this is, this is a historic power, the Commissioners of McGivern, and whether we would exercise it or not still is on the table because of the impact it would have to literally thousands, I mean, 11,000 low-income seniors at the lowest would get $1,000 in tax relief.
Do you, do you think that there would, is there, do you think there's a legal way to investigate whether to make the Career Center whole?
Well, I guess that's what would have to be the discussion. I know from the CCA, they're bold, and there was no mechanism created for that, and the question comes down to then, who else do you, now, we can, we can always correct, we can always, for, since we're the taxing authority, like for the county home and for McDAC and all that, we can make them whole, but we're not the taxing authority for, so then who else do we arguably want to make, make whole? And I guess slippery slope. I know that Brett has something he wanted to say.
Brett, can you grab the mic from, from Miles before you?
Or he can come up.
Or you can come up.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Okay. Come on up.
One of the elements that I wanted to draw our attention to is because these effects would really be taking place for next year, as we as a county are looking into the start of our budget cycle, we oftentimes are examining which outside agencies or interrelated agencies that we provide subsidies to, budget subsidies to. Though we do not necessarily have a clear-cut legal method for rerouting property tax, obviously, our increase to the general fund, we are one of those organizations that is receiving considerably more out of our inside millage than we will be giving away in our homestead exemption. I understand the sensitivity that the Medina County Career Center is going to experience out of this, it's a program that I deeply believe in as well. My thought would be that as we look at our budget process this year, perhaps we could perhaps we could invite them to apply for a subsidy through that. Through our budgeting, we would be able to make that essentially a one-year adjustment, similarly to our property taxes. Provide enough relief to cover the shortfall that they would be experiencing while simultaneously being able to make the rest of this all make sense. Because when we're looking at the dollars and cents, $5.5 million, that's going out to 11,000 individuals that genuinely need it versus the original discussion. And, and in my email, I, to you guys covering some of this, we had covered kind of the difference between who the owner occupancy credit hits versus the, where you guys had seen the impact.
That was my question. Do we know if that kind of subsidy is legal?
I, we utilize several other subsidy pathways for various other organizations that are similarly interrelated, so I don't, I don't see.
We might be able to find something in the statute relates to the support for education.
Yeah, because I mean, we also support through OSU, through their, through their learning initiatives for us.
I would be all for this if we could find a way to make the career center whole.
And that takes me to the other part of the discussion, which is, which is our own inside millage. You know, we've, we, kind of where we started this discussion was with the summary of, you know, how, how tough it's going to be.
How much we could afford.
Right. On us to do that. And we do have a lot more latitude on our own inside millage. The one thing I would like to consider doing is a reduction of our own inside millage. So we're not just imposing the homestead on these other entities. But we're taking kind of our own medicine as well and kind of, kind of setting, setting the expectation there.
More than the offset from the homestead.
Exactly. Yeah.
I like that idea.
Because, because what I want to be able to do is look the other leaders in the eye and say, look, we're, we're, we're feeling this too. Because the tempting thing, the most tempting thing, if I'm being completely honest about it, the most tempting thing about the homestead reduction is it, we don't feel it all that much. I mean, and I, and I, and I say that cautiously because the DD board feels it certainly. McDAC, county home, social services levies, all without inside millage would feel it. But in terms of, you know, there's a way to do this where we do just that and still collect our, you know, $3 million increase, $3 million plus increase of inside millage. And I don't feel comfortable doing it that way.
And it looks like Butler County is indeed doing what I, record we have is also, Rhonda verified, they're doing both as well. They're reducing their inside millage as well as doing a piggyback homestead.
Right.
So you're suggesting we might want to do both.
Yeah. The, the thing I don't.
Provided we can get the, the career center whole, if you will, and offset that loss.
The thing that I don't like about the reduction of inside millage alone is that it doesn't move the needle for the most.
That need it the most.
The folks who need it the most. The thing that I do like about it is that it, it's, you know, there's, there's significant monies there. And it allows us to kind of spread the cost of that throughout our upcoming budgeting process. We're going to have to pass that through, you know, to all of our, our various departments. And it's, it's going to make the budget conversations a different dynamic.
I think it's a very responsible decision to tighten our belt also.
Yep.
Yeah.
While helping the vulnerable populations with the homestead.
That does take it to the next question is how do we communicate best with the local, local entities affected? If we're going to go homestead exemption, obviously has an impact on them. How do we communicate with them? I know Richland County is doing like an all-county meeting of the various entities. We need to communicate with them what our thoughts are about moving forward and ask them for public, basically a public response.
Yeah.
They need to meet and talk about it and respond to us.
Right.
Their thoughts on this proposed doubling of the homestead exemption. And I want to leave it specifically for that. I know their tendency will want to do backroom meetings, but I think they need to public respond as a board. Their boards are the taxing authority, not their superintendent.
According to the charts, as far as the townships and villages go, the Reds are the three affected. And one of them is Canaan Township. And then Guilford and Harrisville. But the, the, you know, the other one is Creston, which again, those two are, two of those are outside our county. So if you look at this list of townships and villages, it's, it's one township that goes negative, correct? It's, it's only one.
It's Guilford and Harrisville.
Guilford and Harrisville.
Oh, Harrisville.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You have.
But I, but, but remember, these are estimates too.
Yeah.
And they haven't been verified.
They have not been certified.
You're talking about $1,900 and $1,500.
Right. That's my point.
Huge amounts of money, on hundreds of thousands of dollars.
That's my point.
So at that point, it gets to be, I hate to say a rounding error, but it ends up being like, okay, how much is it going to be? Is this something that, obviously, they need to communicate with us. And they, Guilford Township may say, yeah, okay, we like the idea. You're helping our seniors. And this is worth it to us, even though they're going to get less.
With, as far as when you look at our villages and townships.
Oh, yeah.
The, the impact is.
They're still positive.
Right.
Right.
And I, I would advocate that when you are looking at those figures, you are seeing that essentially, at worst, we're largely keeping them cash neutral. This is put against their increases.
That's right. Correct.
So what you're really seeing is the fact that they may not see the same increase that they would have before this action. But in total, they, you know, the help that is being provided to residents inside those.
Townships.
Townships is far in excess of the, I think one of them is $700 net effect. And I would urge that you guys.
But this is also helping their most vulnerable residents.
Exactly. They're, they're basically disabled veterans and, and the poor seniors, the.
Yes.
Well, what we're, what we're looking at.
For them, it'd be worth it.
Yeah. What we're looking at is the cost, is the cost of five and a half million dollars of tax relief. That's, that's what this chart is. And so what I like about this, this distillation of it is that it gives us the, the direct cost, which is the homestead exemption amounts that lead to that $5.5 million. But it offsets it against the, the new money, the inside millage that's going to be in there. And so what we're seeing is unlike when there was some discussion about doing with inside millage altogether at the state level, where there was no, nothing coming behind it except for maybe the possibility of passing a sales tax, we're saying, well, there are dollars there in most of these instances to replenish that.
Right.
I don't, I don't want to overlook, though, the impact to DD board, health department, McDAC, county home, and social services.
We also have the various levies, the libraries.
Right. The library, county parks.
We don't have, yeah.
As far as county home, when you look at $20,000 and social services, these are departments, and McDAC, these are departments that, and levies that we could assist through our budget too.
They're our levies.
Right. That's what I'm saying is.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Right. If they need it with the budget process, we can provide.
So although those are negative numbers, those are three of the negatives right there that we could assist very easily.
So, and then, and I think that's the other thing that.
With our increase, with the increase that we're getting.
With the inside millage increase, that we, even while rolling back our own inside millage that we take with what we have left, that's part of what we would do with it. And, and I think that's.
We could through our budget process.
Yes.
We would have the discretion to do that. Because we have the discretion through our budget process to, to, to fund those things anyway. I mean, we already have that before this new law, so.
Agreed.
But in my mind, I think that's how we should be looking at the inside millage dollars is new expenses, which we looked at a couple of weeks ago. And we see we already have three or four million dollars in new expenses to worry about. But also filling, you know, backfilling some of these, some of these dollars that are, that are going away to some of these other entities. That still leaves, you know, the, the library boards you mentioned, the fire districts which are, you know, which have, in terms of total dollars, less of it, less of an impact. You know, park district. So some of these other entities. But I think it's important just to distinguish that because if, if entities that do receive inside millage, specifically the schools, were to not take a similar reduction in their inside millage, you know, to offset the cost of this homestead exemption, I understand, you know, that would make sense to me.
Obviously Cloverleaf was already taking some initial actions. We'll have to change their numbers based upon what the impact of this.
Because they're waiting to see what we do.
Exactly. Right. Well, they are waiting, that they would like to hear as soon as possible.
Yeah.
So they can make the appropriate communication to the auditor's office.
But that's where the, the inside millage part of this discussion to me is that it makes it a little bit more palatable. If I had confidence sitting here that if we pushed pause on this, I would rather each of these entities make these decisions on their own instead of us imposing it on them. I just don't have a lot of confidence that that's going to happen without our direction.
I agree.
And, and that's where I think we need to make some of these tough decisions, particularly when the benefit hits the, the households that most need it.
And again, looking at that list, as far as villages and townships, it's two, and it's both under $2,000.
Right. Right.
And as Steve said, a projection.
So do you think a public meeting à la Richland County is the, is the best next step?
I don't know. Maybe, I, I don't know. I, certainly we need to communicate with them in a letter or some form. I'll be, this is what we're looking at. This, we're anticipating, give them a timeframe to basically communicate back with us publicly what their position is.
And what's our deadline? Don't we have a date deadline for this year to do that?
Well, the end of the month.
The end of October.
October 31st.
So we've got basically two more meetings.
Yeah.
Well, rates, any rates can be pushed out till December.
But the law says we have to take action before the 31st of October.
For any rollback.
Yeah. Their, their declaration requires that.
Has to take action. So we need to be ready with a resolution on the 31st.
So the piggyback.
Two weeks. Yeah.
Just to clarify, the piggyback has to happen for October 31st. Do we have additional time for the rollback or not? The rollback would have to happen by then too if we were going to.
No, for the inside millage change?
Yeah.
No, you have until probably first week of December to get that information. So you need to get a resolution.
Okay.
And then you'd be able to do the, for next tax year. All right.
Okay, considering that the career center is an institution that serves the whole county, you know what I mean, not just one school district.
Well, except for Wadsworth.
Except for Wadsworth. Do we need to get a ruling or some sort of research on our, our way to have them come through our budget process to make them whole? Should we do this?
Well, Brett needs, I guess, take a look. We need to quickly research.
I had started some preliminary research and did not find anything that was jumping out. Now, this is, this is very early on, once I had learned of the concern and have not found anything that seems that we would be unable to provide that relief. I think that there's a little bit more diligence that's needed on my part to be able to say assuredly that there is not. But at present, I have not seen anything that says that we should not be able to provide that relief.
If that is the case, then I do support both measures, the inside millage and the homestead.
Okay.
If, if I may offer one more additional suggestion. If we are looking at some of these other, at some of these other groups for the, for concern as you're looking at the idea of us taking a little bit of, a little bit less of a bite by refunding inside millage. The, I will remind you that we are looking at, most of our other revenue sources are projected to be flat. So once we are able to make the adjustments that we need to for the career center, our increases will probably be a little bit, will be right around 4%. So that's, that's not a substantial increase year over year from last year.
Considering the budgets that are being heard out in the community with the reappraisal, it's time for us to do the same thing and buckle down on our budgets.
I, I don't disagree. I just want to make sure you guys have that with the numbers.
To buckle down on their budgets if we don't buckle down on ours also.
And, and I think, and I think it needs to be a meaningful number. And when I say meaningful number, I don't know exactly what that is. But it's, it's bigger than any of the numbers on the sheet that we're looking at right now.
I agree.
Because we can absorb, you know.
This is a one-year.
Right.
This is a one-year tax relief temporary.
Down for one year to help our.
And we can absorb that across our entire budget instead of imposing it on one group or the other. And so then it's, it's essentially us saying, we're going to find the pockets to make that happen. Yes, it will make the budgeting process more difficult, but I think that's the responsible thing to do. So.
Well, it's a responsible thing for, you know, all departments to understand how our community is, is hurting with these new values. The vulnerable populations will be hurting with these new values.
Right.
And I've got kind of, I guess, if we think about Butler County, then joining the effort too, they, they have also called out the general assembly to do something about tax reform. Which absolutely needs to, to accomplish at that top level, which we can't control. What we can do is basically do a Band-Aid.
Right.
For one year, temporary, with the, that the general assembly isn't, is empowered all the way up to the end of next year, and they have the ability to actually impact, impact the following years.
And your point about just emphasizing the one year, that that is the communication given to all these entities that we're making a decision for. You know, it's a one-year decision that we're making.
And the year after that, it will come back up.
And I know that they're going to keep, be keeping score in Columbus about who's making cuts and, and doing these things and who aren't. If they don't think sufficient steps have been made to reduce, they're going to, they're going to consider some of those more radical proposals again and.
As we know, with, with, with that constitutional amendment on there, more than likely, it's going to end up being on the ballot in, in November. So that'll all come to a head.
Right.
There's no doubt. By the end of next year.
Well, I, I feel good about this as a plan going forward. I think the, the main open issue is how we, how we invite feedback. I think your idea about having, you know, if people want to, want to make, take formal action is through their boards and submit it to us, that's fine. If, if, you know, we've got, the soonest we're going to take any action on anything, but also perhaps the latest would be the last meeting in October, right? So we've got two more meetings after this, this month, that people can come and offer their comments on, on it as well.
Well, I guess, basically, we give them the information we have, we show what we, and then say, we would, we need your immediate, you know, input.
And to be fair to, and to be fair to all our, the public entities out there, the villages, the townships, et cetera, that haven't taken any action. You know, it's so unsure what the state is going to do right now. You know, their thoughts may be, maybe that they're thinking and waiting to see actions that the states are going to be taking before they make any decisions for themselves. So that's very understandable.
The schools, and I mean, who I did with the superintendent Brunswick, that was the basic message is because of the great uncertainty.
Yes.
Of all the bills that are on there, they're all, have all targeted the schools.
Yep.
And they are just, you know, you're hesitant to make any, any kind of movements because they don't know what's going to happen. And right now, there's just bills going through there. They still, right now, they're, obviously, they have the, the one Senate override. There's the other potential ones that could impact our budgets. And of course, all these other bills that are working their way through regarding the 20 mil floor and all those adjustments, and they're just waiting to see. So they're kind of holding their cards. And I guess I can't blame a school board member who's responsible for trying to, to financially develop a five-year plan based on a, a group of legislators who haven't yet decided how much they're going to target the schools yet.
Well, but I also think everything that's done in the meantime, à la Cloverleaf, we've, we're giving them a lot of credit. I think they're entitled to it. But everything that they can, that you can do in the meantime can, can kind of stave that off a little bit as well. It is helpful. And, you know, like I say, I, instinctively, I don't like the position we've been put in to make this decision on behalf of other entities with their own, their own boards of trustees or, you know, board, board members or, you know, whoever else is their, is their leadership operation. But I also don't think the timeline is such that it permits all of these entities to take this action in the meantime. And so if we do nothing, I have very little confidence that this type of, of relief would be, would be realized across the county.
If we look at the total impact, I mean, the budget, if you're talking about just the homestead exemption, 5.5 million, over 11,000 low-income seniors.
That's who we want to help.
400 disabled veterans.
It's significant.
And those are significant, that's significant assistance. It's hard actually to say that that's not a, a benefit.
When you're talking about the people, when you're talking about the people whose ability to stay in their homes is jeopardized by the current tax situation, those are the people we're talking about, which is why, to me, this is, this is the most impactful tool we've been given. I wish we had some additional discretion. But because of that, I think we need to find a way to make it work.
Agreed.
Other thoughts?
I, according to Brett, looks like we can't.
Okay.
So we'll have some communication out to our other.
All the jurisdictions that are affected.
Yeah, all the subdivisions that are on this list. I think it would be helpful, I think this was your idea, Steve, to kind of give them our, you know, our calculations, I think, you know, from between the auditor's office and the finance department. If nothing else, so they could check our math, right? I mean, I think we've got it right, but we want to make sure that they're, they're seeing that. Because some of these numbers, maybe they haven't seen it distilled this way either. So.
Well, each of their treasurers are making five-year projections based on some of these numbers. So I think, you know, they had presentations and they need to make sure. And my conversation with the superintendent of Cloverleaf, with Daryl, is they'd like to see this information. And he, so he can communicate with his, his treasurer and his board.
Right. And I had a similar conversation with the DD board. And we, we want to get this information to their hands too, so they can see it. Obviously, it's a different calculus for them because they're one of the ones, unfortunately, that don't have inside millage. So.
But they do have a healthy carryover. And so I. But they do have a healthy carryover, and so I think those, and we're the budgeting authority.
Right.
For them, so I think that is the things we can take into consideration when we do our budget.
Yep.